The Springfield Planning Commission July 2nd meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're ready to call the roll. While Gina gets ready. While she's doing that, I want to put this on the record that our staff has done an excellent job of putting our meetings, our previous meetings together in the Zoom format, and we thank you for it.
Y'all are very welcome, and I would like to say, I am so glad to be back in the room together. It is not nearly as difficult to get our meetings together live than it is to get them together for a day, and I'm just thankful that we're able to get back together.
You ready to call the roll, Gina?
Yes, sir. Mr. Townsend. Mr. Cool. Ms. Woodard.
Here.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollisworth.
Here.
Ms. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Boyd.
Here.
Seven members here to ask if we do have form.
Okay, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from June 4th?
Some.
Some.
I heard a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They'll stand approved then. Under new business, item number one is a rezoning request for Baldwin Lane from R-20 to R-7 to allow for new residences to be built. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Somebody say it.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I guess we need to vote on that. All in favor, we don't?
No, we don't.
Okay.
We'll vote if somebody wants to move forward for, to vote on the agenda.
Tony made it.
Tony made it.
Mr. Townsend. We say, wait until you write the name.
Good to see you, Tony.
You had the board.
Okay, we're on item number one, the Baldwin Lane rezoning.
Yes, sir. Venture 24 has requested that we have, that we rezon this property or that the city rezoned this property from the existing R-20 zoning classification to R-7. And these are the properties and the right-of-way in the middle that has been requested to be rezoned. This is down on Baldwin Lane. It's used, right here, it used to be, if I remember correctly, the old Baldwin's barbecue place before they moved into the city. So, and what's shown here is this. This is the existing South Side subdivision. It is, it was recorded November 1945. It's of record indeed, Book 100, page 342. Mr. Moore can go ahead, if Venture 24 wanted to move forward with this, they could build a road here and build out these lots right here, these three facing, these four facing Harp Lane, and they could do one down here on Dunn Lane, Dunn Road. So, they have requested that it be rezoned to R-7, which is abutting their property right here, and that would allow them to add two more. Mr. Moore?
Um, three, three more on Dunn.
Three more on Dunn. So, they would have an availability of nine total?
Nine.
Nine total. Two more than they're capable of doing now. So, Mr. Moore's here. If you have any questions concerning what he's requesting, or Venture 24's requesting, Mr. Francis and residents along South Main are here to give you their opinion as well if y'all would like to get that information.
Okay, I've got one question for you before Jim gets, the right-of-way.
Right there.
That's on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
Would that have to be rezoned at a later date?
No, that, we can rezon rights-of-way at the same time. We do it all the time. You know, we rezon within areas. The blue was just called out. It's within the area requested for rezoning.
Okay. All right, Jim, did you want to come up and?
Yes, please. I could have done, I could have had a presentation with that. I'd like to hand you all some information if that's possible. First off, I want to say thank you to the board. We've had a successful relationship moving Springfield forward, and I'm very thankful and appreciative for everything you've helped us to do. Handing out proposed layout, which is the black sheet. And then handing out the existing South Side, let me give you a different one that's labeled, existing South Side subdivision, which is, which are currently recorded, and we could begin engineering work and permits tomorrow. Oh, sorry. Wow, okay. It's just strange time for everybody, so sorry.
Let me speak, you get that mic, man.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll keep this brief, but I just wanted to kind of, first off, discuss the area surrounding the subject property and kind of hit on non-conforming use. Sorry, it's not conforming use of it. So, as, as you can see, here's the subject property highlighted. There's an R-20 stretch that runs down South Main, and I don't know, there's not much that's hitting R-20. Most of the homesites are smaller. You've got some non-conforming use with some commercial. You've got industrial warehouse here on, by Hill and Cotton. Also, you can see the variety of zoning classifications just within 500 feet. I think there are six different ones, including industrial, HUD, CS, R-7, R-20. We do abut this R-7 apartments, which is also a non-conforming use, would begin MRO zoning where it does today. Also, Mr. Francis's property is on R-7 as well. So, we're attempting an R-7 classification, which on Harp Lane, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight properties on Harp Lane that are 7,500 square feet. They're actually shown on your South Side subdivision. I've got Harp Lane labeled there. Important to note that one section of Harp Lane, I've written, is not existing, so that's not currently in place. And the reason we're here is I think it makes a lot more sense, if you look at your black sheet, to pivot lots one through five and face Baldwin Lane, rather than us have the expense to build Harp Lane. More importantly, the city of Springfield would then be, of course, maintaining Harp Lane. We can pivot those lots and have the same number of lots with, just without having to build an additional road, honestly. And then lots six through nine on the black sheet, so that's currently platted for one lot. We, we could do four. I'll remind everyone that Dunn Lane is a city-owned street. We would work with Public Works and Codes to widen, improve Dunn Lane to accept the four lots, of course, bring it up to, Mr. Brewer? Is that a minority?
Could be a minor, but.
Minor road, okay.
Minor residential or residential. So, they either 20 or 22, depending on how.
So, we would work with Public Works and City Hall to bring that road up to Code to get to Lot 6 there, and also, I just wanted to kind of show everyone some of the homes that we've been building. These are on, this one is 22nd Avenue, which was an 11-unit treasure park that we removed, and we built four of these homes. You'll notice the brick-to-grave, the landscaping, the different cut-ups in the front elevation, and use of mixed materials in the board and batten and the plank siding. And this is representative of the same types of homes that we would build on Baldwin. These, 22nd sold in the 180,000 range. We'll do this today would be over 200,000 in that area. So, we're looking to opportunity to add nine homes, add the utility sales, add the water sales, as everyone knows, we're committed to purchase from Logan Todd, and of course, add property taxes, and what we think are fine quality homes. Happy to answer any questions. Anyone has any?
Can you do it for R-10?
We, I believe we would be at six lots. We did R-10, which is what we have now. We're just asking for, asking for consistent use to match existing Harp Lane and R-7 zoning adjacent here. Our preference would be, would be R-7. These homes will be for sale, not for rent.
Would you have to be doing any improvements on Dunn Street?
Yes, Dunn would need to be widened, and then we would be doing some utility work as well. We have not made it that far as far as having any architectural work or survey work done, so that's very preliminary. If it turns out that it's not cost feasible, then we'll just continue with the one lot that we have on, on Dunn. And one, one really important thing I want to point out, I hear a lot that, well, you did it for Jim Moore, you got to do it for me. So, I just want to remind everyone that these are existing lots. This is not someone bringing a large parcel, asking this board to divide up into R-7. It's already platted with 7,000 square foot lots that we could start tomorrow. So, when someone says that, you know, we can point out, no, he had existing lots, he's not breaking up a larger tract. I think that's important to remember.
How many lots you going to put on Dunn Road?
We would ask for, the platte here would show four.
Right.
And of course, we would improve Dunn to accommodate.
These lots are already set up.
Pardon me?
These lots are already set up.
Uh, what do you mean, already set up? I'm sorry.
You said it was already existing.
Well, it's, okay, so, the black one is the proposed layout, which we would do if we get R-7. The white sheet is the existing.
20.
Let's see, how it's platted today.
This is one lot.
Right, right. Everything else is Dunn.
Everything else is, yes.
So, actually, we'd be getting less lots on Baldwin and Harp.
You'd be getting eight lots.
Mm-hmm.
On, on what's on the blue sheet. But you had eight lots. I mean, I hate to see that neighborhood out there become that right there. I really do. I mean, we look at through there, and we try to change up that one zone, and on that one deal, and the mayor, Bolton Aldman, changed that for us.
Yeah.
But it's okay. But I mean, I don't think going, you know, it may be all right, R-7. It may be all right. But I hate to see that neighborhood become that house right there. I mean, that's, that's a starter home to me.
Yep.
There's no starter home out there that's going to be under $200,000 anymore. They just ain't happening. And I hate to see another starter home get that percentage right there.
Yeah, I appreciate your, your opinion. I would remind you of the apartments next door to the property that, in my opinion, would, would hamper a sale of a $300,000 home, for example.
But, I mean, they were built, what, 20 years ago?
And they're still there.
Yeah. I just, you know.
Fair enough.
If you took the existing lots that you have, you would have to build Harp Road to do that though, right? Extend that roadway down?
Well, that's, so, if we, if we did not pursue a rezoning, then yes, we would build Harp Road, extend it, turn it over to the city for maintenance, and have, I think, the same number of lots on that section as the proposed layout, which would turn all of the lots towards Baldwin.
And with the R-20 zoning, could you get two lots out of Lot Number One there?
That's a good question. I don't imagine it would be cost feasible to improve Dunn Road for one lot, to gain, to net gain one lot.
But it would be to get two lots. You could justify the cost of upgrading Dunn Road for two lots, because that's.
For two additional lots, so three total.
What you're asking for.
Well, what we're asking, R-7 would allow these four on Dunn.
Right, right.
So, you know, if we could get three, I would just have to put the pencil to it.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not sure at the moment. That's certainly something we could explore.
Basically, you've got seven lots there now you could build on today, right?
Yeah, well, once we build Harp, yeah, that are approved to be built.
That are approved, so all you're really asking for is two more lots.
Two more lots, which would be net, just, you know, I guess you say net addition on Dunn.
And then upgrade Dunn Road also.
Correct.
And in doing that, I'm, I'm seeing and hearing then that that's going to take the burden off of the city to upkeep a road.
How Dunn Road are you?
To upkeep Harp, yet, and a Harp extension. Yes, ma'am.
Harp extension.
So, if we built what we have today, we're going to go do a Harp extension, we're going to get the same number of lots. Everybody's backyard is going to overlook the apartments and then, and then turn it over to the city for maintenance. Yes, ma'am. When we could face the less number of lots directly to Baldwin.
My comment is that these houses that I've seen that's been built around Springfield, on 22nd and down on Bats, are nice-looking houses.
Thank you.
And I'd a whole lot rather see that and sell more utilities and bring in more tax revenue than a vacant lot sitting there.
I also did tell those comments exactly. You know, we're looking for more homes, better looking than what we've got there, and the revenues of the city, we cannot overlook that.
Yeah, these are brick-to-grave.
How much is it going to bring?
I think it'll bring money.
That's what I'm saying.
There's places.
That house right there's not going to bring very much revenue to the city of Springfield, tell you a story. It ain't going to happen.
About $200,000 worth of taxes.
Yeah.
I'd a whole lot rather build a $400,000 house somewhere.
Might not look like anybody would buy a $400,000 house sitting right there.
Position right there.
It might run right there, you're right.
And I, let me, let me, let me add a, add a point. The Modern Estates legacy days are, I believe, over. Nobody's going to develop a half-acre lot. There would be no money, you know, with the cost of infrastructure, roads, utilities. I, I'm not saying it won't happen, I'd be surprised. So, you know, I think, how I try to look at it, and when we look at surrounding communities, let's don't restrict ourselves about a square footage and equate that to the quality of the home. They have, they really have nothing to do with one another. It's a design standard issue.
You did bring up the fact that, you said it was like 20 homes on the other side of these, existing homes already, not big here.
Well, Harp Lane, this lot is 7,500, this lot 75, 7,500, 7,500, 7,500, 8,000. Then you've got, well, actually, that's not, this is not a home. It's, Hill and Cotton owns it, along with this industrial building. And then, of course, we have a HUD across the street here in Sleepy Hollow. If you don't know how, how large the lots are there, 5,000 feet, so. My honest opinion is you can have a nice home on 7,000 feet, and it's being done all around us. We, I mean, we, we ramp it up, if we can build a nicer home, absolutely, we do it. But this is the minimum.
I assume the existing building that's on that first lot there, you're going to tear it down eventually? I noticed you've done some work on it.
Yeah, that's, we're, that's, we're remodeling that into a residence, and had siding go up today, and then going to paint the brick to match, and do some black gutters and trim, and improve in the building there as well. And I'll be honest with you on the reason that we're not tearing it down, there was a title issue on just that singular tract. So, I can't, I can't get title insurance to build and sell a new home. The, a title issue that dated back to the 40s, and we just made the decision to keep that one.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I'll give Jim and Tom to get all his things, stuff together there. All right. Now, Raymond lives on the end of Dunn Street, right in behind this property. Always like to get a little input from the neighborhood.
Well, it's given me a hang. I guess it's about the fourth time I've been up here in two years. Let me just briefly give you a little history of that. My wife and I bought that house on Dunn Road 42 years ago. It was the only house available for four kids and a husband and wife in Springfield. We looked everywhere. So, we bought that from Jimmy Dunn, it's called Dunn Road. And that was a Dunn lane. It was really Kerry Lane. And it wasn't part of the city. Nobody knew who it was. We had to get the county judge to rule that it was part of the county. The city came out there and annexed that. You'd look at the line, it sort of go like that, make sure they got me in when I bought the land to pay taxes. On the south side of me is Baggage Field, so there's no building over there that's agricultural. So, I have nothing against the builders, Mr. Moore, and I know his, his mother, known him all his life, and I know he does a good job. But I'm here on behalf of not only my wife and kids and everybody out in that neighborhood. We moved out there, it was not like this. We have, I think our home was praised at like 300,000. I had a man come up the other days off a half million for that, that property. So, it's not as low income as you'd think, because a lot of those people lived there all their life to raise their kids, and went to school here in Springfield and build a future. Now, at this point, they sound, what in the world? Every time we go up planting and zoning, we lose, so let's get out of Springfield. I don't think that's right, folks. I think it's great to build, but I believe you got to take the, the human portion in. These people have built lives there for 30, 40, and 50 years. And we're the most diversified community there is in Springfield. We're white, we're black, we're Mexican, we're all out there, and we get along. But why do you all, the city of Springfield, keep putting things out there that you don't want to put anywhere else? And that's what causes the problem. That's the highest crime rate, yet you want to add nine more houses, nine more families, and the highest crime rate in Springfield. That's just, doesn't seem very fair. And so, Dunn Road he's talking about is Dunn Road. We gave it to the city, they said they would keep it up. But what he's talking about adding the four houses, that's only 400 feet. You've still got a bunch more, half a mile longer down to my, my house. What are you going to do with that? All of a sudden, I run into where it's two lanes from one lane? And come off of South Main Street trying to get to my house, and they've been trying to get to their four houses? Guess we're just all parked over at Hill and Cotton. We've had 45 houses built, if you include this one, in a quarter of a mile since January out there. That's called, down at Sleepy Hollow, you added eight, you've added 28 to last November, where you cited where maybe we'll let the fellow, if he only goes 10,000 square feet to build. Now, we're going to 7,000 square feet to build. So, there'd be 45 new houses, about 200 people, and the traffic's already horrible if you come out South Main. So, I, I don't know why we need to do that. Now, I talked to David yesterday, and I was in surprise. David came up with this plaque, and I said, David, when did you come up with that plaque? Yesterday morning. They called over the county office and got a plaque made in 1945. And as Jim says, he can use that plaque and build six houses and one of them on Dunn Road. And I assume that, that's right. I don't, that's not what I had seen with Jim before. I've seen, I've seen this, and same y'all have. But, but the South building was, came available as of yesterday morning, for some reason. And that brings up another question. Does the legal description mean anything? Because the legal description on this agenda and what's on this South Side do not match. Because if you look at South Side, what, already some of these are where people live. So, we can't figure it out. We all got together today trying to figure it out. And I know Ms. Thompson, well, it's at my house there, I already live in there. So, these numbers and those numbers don't match. So, very hard for us to look at and say exactly where we're building. But anyway, I wanted to visit with you and tell you that we're against the R-7, we're against the zoning of the R-7. We'd like to keep it R-20, or keep it, if the plaque's what it is, do that, okay? And I want to thank you all for your time. I served on the county commission for 13 years and made some tough decisions, and that's not easy, and I appreciate everything you do. But I just want to let you know, we would like to have you vote against this. Thank you very much.
Okay, you had a, a signature petition.
I've got a petition.
How many names did you have on it?
I've got a few, but.
You didn't give it to me. You asked about it, but.
I do have.
I was just wondering how many names you had on it.
27.
27, but that's, that's fine.
But I don't know if it's supposed to be recorded or what?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Did you say that you are not opposed to Mr. Moore starting this project?
No, if, if what he says is right, that plaque, and showed only one house on Dunn Road, it's fine. That's what that plaque, South Side's plaque is supposed to show. So, that's same as this.
That large lot Number One on that plaque, which is the one that fronts out on Dunn, he was just going to put one, would be able to put one house without redoing the roadway?
And that's what, undoubtedly, the plaque in 1945, that nobody had ever seen, the yesterday morning, today, for some reason, called over the county and got it, which I'd seen 42 years ago. Any other questions? Thank you all.
Okay. This isn't a public hearing, but I thought we might ought to hear from Raymond, since he lives out there at the property. Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to make sure. What is staff's recommendation, David?
Staff is not opposed.
Can I make a comment? I'm a resident of the community.
Yeah, well, it's not a public hearing tonight. We, we're just going to hear from Raymond, because he had contacted. We're just going to hear from Raymond because he had contacted most of this board, I think, before the meeting.
I will agree with you.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion to approve and second. We are ready to vote then.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
No.
Ms. Woodard?
No.
Mr. Townsend? Ms. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Allen? Three, four?
One.
One against, one extension. Motion failed.
Okay, and this does not mean it won't show up at the mayor and alderman meeting. This is just a recommendation from this board. All right, item number two is also a rezoning request on Seventeenth Avenue from mobile home to MRO. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Dave.
Okay. Reyes Construction bought these from, I believe, J.T. White's estate. He used to own these. These are, these are on Seventeenth Avenue, you know, a nicely improved street. The infamous pit, or I'm so, been here so long, I can remember they called it the Piggy Pit. But it's right there. This is the shopping center, Elmo's, Elmo Cahead's right there. So they have requested that these nine parcels be rezoned to MRO. At some point, they would combine those and we would get some more right-of-way off of these. The city would. And then, but I think it, one point, I think it's one point six-three is the total. They could, let's see what they could do there. I run these numbers, but I forget them, so. And so it'd be a three thousand square foot. Looks like they could get about twenty-three multi-residential units there, townhomes type thing. You know, they made the, they made the application and we put it out to all of our reviewers, department heads, and other plan reviewers. And one of them replied in his responses, you had me at going from mobile home to MRO. So, you know, any opportunity that we have to remove mobile homes within the city limits of Springfield and provide an opportunity for multi-residential, I don't know that, we haven't had the opportunity to talk with Reyes Construction concerning what their thoughts are, whether they would be rentals or they would be condominiums. Don't know yet. Mr. Reyes has been out of pocket for a little bit. He had a brother pass away and so we've just moved forward with this at their request. Staff is not opposed to the rezoning of this from mobile home to multi-residential office.
I don't hear any, or is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We are ready to vote.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yeah.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Pass at seven zero, eight zero.
All right, item number three, right-of-way abandonment request for the intersection of Baldwin Lane and Harp Lane from Venture Twenty-four LLC. Same property we were discussing item one.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me ask, the petition, or would you, do you still want to move forward with this at the present time, Mr. Doris?
Who's talking in front of the alderman, correct?
We do.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I need to have a motion to put this on the floor for discussion.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I saw a nod there. Okay, Dave.
This is a request to abandon this right-of-way that we were looking at in this previous, this is Harp Lane. This is what has been requested to be abandoned. It's a standard procedure. They have presented us with a legal description, a survey. If it moves forward with the board of mayor and aldermen, they will eventually get us a quick claim deed and so that the city can sign the property notice to them. It's undeveloped property, you know, unimproved. And staff has no opposition to this. If one fails, the other one might be pulled, but if they both, if one passes, this one needs to pass as well. To my knowledge, there are no utilities in there, but we always have the caveat in our ordinances that if there are any, they have to give assurances and things of that
Not being used for anything right now, right?
No, sir. It's unimproved, just like the remainder of these lots. These lots are unimproved as well.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote, Gina.
Ms. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Townsend?
Yeah.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Hollinsworth?
No.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Pass at seven zero, eight zero.
All right, item number four is a final plaid of Dorothy Taylor and James Freeman, three-lot subdivision on Nineteenth Avenue West. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dorothy Freeman and James Freeman have asked to approve this lot on Nineteenth Avenue West. It's off of John L. Patterson, all the way to the end of John L. Patterson. There's, as you can see, there's this house, this house. There's a lot in between here and there. But there are two existing lots with a total of a hundred and fifty, they're like seventy-five feet apiece. It's zoned R-seven, which would allow them to do these fifty-foot wide lots. They're all, they're like fifty-one and some change on all of them. So they're just a little bit bigger than the minimum requirement. But the square footage of all these lots is, are point-two acres, you know, eighty-seven seventeen to eighty-seven thirty-three square feet. They have, staff has approved. They've met all the requirements of our final plaque requirements, and it has been approved
Any questions?
Mr. Gagnes is here.
Okay. If y'all have any questions, this will be the gentleman that'll be purchasing these, I guess, from Mr. Freeman and Ms. Taylor. I also want to go ahead and point out that they have shown how the driveways are going to go in there in accordance with our requirement of the municipal code. So they have, they're showing how they're going to get those in there as well. And so if y'all have any questions, Mr. Gagnes is here.
Okay, any questions?
Could you repeat the name of that property owned by?
Presently owned by Dorothy Taylor and James Freeman.
So there will be enough room behind the house to turn around?
Yes, well, for them to park, you know, they can come down the sides and they park behind the house. And they'd have enough room to back out and go that way.
What size houses are we talking about?
We just like the building envelope that's about twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet with side plan, which is pretty standard. I don't think it's a problem.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion then?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ready for the vote, Mr. Chairman?
Do what?
Did you get a second?
We did. Yeah, Alan got the second. We're ready to vote.
You ready to?
Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Woodard?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Townsend?
Pass it again.
Mr. Gregg?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Six yeses and two pass. Abstent.
All right, under old and other business, I have asked David if he would give us a status report on the Carter Lumber Company building.
Presently, we have, we worked with Mr. Byrd, Byrd previously, right after the building burned, we hired a contractor who charged us approximately three thousand dollars to take down the remaining wall that was along South Main Street. We were afraid that it would fall and injure people and/or other properties. He was to reimburse us or pay us to do that work, which did not take place. It is my understanding that we have filed a lien on the property for that amount of We have, we have been in contact with Mr. Byrd and we have urged him to move forward with cleaning up of that property. I believe that he had not, he did not have insurance on that property due to personal issues with his wife being sick and in the hospital. He missed his renewal. So at some point, the city may have to move forward on the cleanup there on that property. People have, I don't know if you've noticed, but people are already starting to dump things there. There are a bunch of mattresses that have been left there. So we will have to discuss this with the board of mayor and aldermen to see how they want to move forward with that.
Do we know what the value of that property is, what it would appraise for?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't.
Do we know what the value of that property is, what it would appraise for?
Not at the present time. As blank property as it is, I couldn't tell you. It has the property value that probably, that the county has appraised it for at a minimum, maybe more. I couldn't say for sure.
But the city has a three-hundred-thousand-dollar lien on it?
No, we have a three-thousand-dollar lien.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. I was so tired.
I'm sorry. If I said three-hundred thousand, if I said three-hundred thousand, I apologize. No.
Did you hear that too, Virginia? I'm going to feel so bad.
Well, you know, masks make it, you know, my father's told me the other day, I can't hear you, I had my mask on, so. Anyway, but it's only three thousand at this time. But, you know, we have been getting some concerns, obviously, from the planning commission about it and neighbors, surrounding neighbors, they would like for us, you know, they would like for Mr. Byrd to go ahead and clean it up, those that are on South Main and those that are on the back side on Bats Boulevard. So we will, we'll move.
He don't have any insurance at all.
No. So, you know, we'll have to move delicately as we go forward and...
The best way to get it cleaned up right now is to go to the right-hand side of it and start moving all his cars. If you go in there and just get a lien against it and say, hey, we're finna clean it up, if you start moving his right-hand cars, he'll start cleaning it up. He's got a lot of money tied up in there, a bunch of old stuff. He'd like to have it, I'm sure. If he doesn't, get rid of it. But, I mean, let's don't get this thing, get into the Second Amendment, please. Let's don't let it get into that mess.
Or the royal lien.
You know, we just can't stand that. I mean, it is a bad, it's an eyesore. It's an eyesore right there.
And I would like to, you know, as I told Mr. Alan the other day, I would like to urge each of you to talk to your alderman about your thoughts on the old Carter Lumber Company building. You know, we try to, you know, we communicate with the board, but we communicate about the business, not the planning commission's concerns because they never really ask. Mr. Gregg relays that information from time to time. But the best way for the planning commission to let the board of mayor and alderman know what your concerns are on things that are not on the business of the planning commission is to call them and talk to them and express your concerns. And in that way, there's a, you know, they understand where y'all stand. I don't know that I can always and fairly convey your concern about some of these things that we discuss. So I urge y'all to reach out to the people that appointed you to this planning commission. They respect you, they thank you for your service to our community, and they would gladly listen to your concerns.
There are four tracts on that property, starting down at Fifteenth, where the funeral home is, coming up to where the wall there at Carlock. There's four individual tracts. Harvey Combs has tried to buy them from Dan Byrd, and I think Dan Byrd has threw him a price that Mr. Combs, a little bit on the ridiculous side, because there's still a lot of money on the table to clean that place up.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
A lot. And Mr. Byrd is not going to clean it up. He don't have the resources to clean it up.
Well, Dan is one of them. You're going to have to force his hand. I mean, you can't back off of him. You've got to force his hand, say, this we're finna do, at the end of this month, we're finna go in there and clean this up. You've got to force his hand. Then he can go to Mr. Watson, and say, hey, I made my legal incentive. But if he doesn't, you're going to force his hand. If you don't, he'll be sitting there this year, next year. He'll still be sitting there.
And like I said, if y'all relay that information to the board, they will instruct Ms. Hope for us to go ahead and start getting some pricing so we can talk about, you know...
It's pretty good. It's just not being lots.
Yeah. Talk about how we want to move, how they want to move forward and how they want to figure out how to fund that. I'm not sure that I have enough money in my budget to do that this year, to, you know, we, we... Our budgets are not, so we've reduced revenues, and so therefore, we've reduced budget sizes all across the board. You know, we respect that the citizens of Springfield have had a tough time over the last few months. And, you know, the city of Springfield wants to do its part as well, you know, reflecting that we understand lower revenues coming in. So, but, you know, we, we've been waiting to go to court on the old Creamery for several years. It just keeps getting worse and worse, and it's been put off once again. You know, we would like to have money in the budget to be able to take that down once the judge says, "Go for it." So, you know, so... I could spend a lot of taxpayer money cleaning up the city of Springfield, or not me personally, but our staff. And we'd be glad to do it for y'all and the Board of Mayor and Alderman if that's what they wanted us to do.
Okay, is there any other old business or other business that you'd like to talk about tonight?
Well, we have one other item, yes, well, before we move to the BZA.
The BZA?
We are, we looked at an additional 12 townhomes to the Continental Arms Apartments or Continental Apartments. They have presented a preliminary of another eight, not another eight, but eight. We've had discussions, they would like to go with the 12. So it will probably be back on the agenda next month. We will, you know, it's a preliminary, so we will do a little bit more due diligence to be better able to answer some questions concerning that and be in a better position for you guys to make some recommendations to the property owner that could help him obtain whatever number y'all think is best and the best way to access those apartments or those townhomes. And I just wanted to let you know that it was going to be coming back, and it would be... Their preliminary site plan shows access to Crescent once again. Anything else other than that, Gina? Okay. We'll let Ms. Head cover the BZA meeting agenda that's coming up next Tuesday.
On next Tuesday?
Second Tuesday. I apologize.
Just the way it felt. Mr. Gaines, who was here earlier with the three lot plat. He has, he's requested a variance, a 15-foot variance for Matlow Street and 16th Avenue with the corner lot. He would like to have a 10-foot setback on the 16th Avenue side to construct a home residence there. So that's the only item that's on the agenda for. And I can, I can forward all that to you all through email if you want me to do that as well.
Has Mr. Gaines built other things here in Springfield? I don't really know him, I just wondered.
Samantha, have you? He hasn't gotten any building permits, has he? I didn't think he had, but I wanted to check with her. She's grabbed on the building permit.
I just wondered.
Okay. Just a curiosity, out there at the Legacy, where they're developing that piece of property off Oakland Drive, what's that, is that going to be townhomes, condos?
Well, okay, it's going to be units that will be sold.
Okay.
And Ms. Mason can probably speak to this better than I can. Right now, developers are calling units that they sell townhomes because it's a very specific banking language. If you call them condominiums, first-time buyers cannot qualify for loans. If you call them townhomes, first-time buyers can qualify for loans. Now, with that said, you know, Mr. Blackman was in here. We approved a subdivision, we approved a subdivision plat that had, you know, he's going to transfer a bigger private element. It's going to contain some property along with each individual unit. He had shown, you know, three-dimensional of one-story and two-story units that were going to sell in a range from 250 up. You know, that was six, seven, eight months ago now. They, you know, they may be selling higher than that, but, you know, they've, they've, they're, they are out there grading, doing the infrastructure. They have not yet, we have not talked to them about a bond establishment yet. We, y'all did approve that plat. The staff has approved, obviously, the construction plans because they're out there installing them. That was the contingent approval that y'all approved. He's still got to get the final HOA documents to us for approval, which will be recorded with the plat when the plat is recorded. But he has not, we have not established a bond yet or anything like that. If he had bonded from scratch, it was going to be $550,000. And so he chose to, rightly so, to put in a lot of infrastructure.
It's going to be on the line of the existing townhomes that are there over across from the clubhouse, something along that line.
Well, we've got that information, Mr. Powell, I'm glad to get, send that to you.
I don't know how I missed that.
Well, you might not have been here that day. It's brick fronts, hardyboard backs, granite finishes, you know, hardwood floors. It's, you know, high-end, higher-end development. There's, you know, we get calls all the time about, "When's he going to put, get them done and put on the market? I'm ready to buy one." So I think they'll sell well in Springfield. We'll be glad to get that, those 3D renderings for Mr. Blackman's development emailed to you. We'll, I'll make myself a note and send it to you first thing Monday morning.
Sure.
I'm going to sleep late tomorrow.
Also, you can go on his website, Blackman House, right?
Yes.
Okay, I can just do that.
I don't know if they're going to look exactly like those, but that, if you go through that, you can see some of his work.
I just, I guess I missed that meeting. I just was curious about what was going to be in and about how many were going to be there.
It's going to be 52.
52.
And if y'all, and we had this discussion, and I don't know if you were privy to it. You know, that's part of the Legacy PUD that was finalized in 2004. And that 11 and a half acres was designated with up to 226 multi-residential units. So to get 226 multi-residential units, you were going to have to build a very large building, very tall, which would have been allowed under the PUD negotiations that were made in 2004. I find, you know, I'm very, I think the city of Springfield is very fortunate that Mr. Blackman did not want to go that way, and he wanted to go with what he went with, and the 52 units, that number worked for him to buy the property, improve the property, build on the property, and sell. So he's, he's not going to be selling any lots. He's going to build them himself and then sell them as he goes.
All right, anything else?
This is just information purposes only. I don't know how many of you are aware of the simple fact that when we raised the water rate, it was a half-two situation. We are on the hook for $3 million per year for water. And this ain't going to stop. It's ongoing. So we need to sell water, and we need to build everywhere that somebody is willing to build a nice, decent, affordable house. It's the only way we're going to be able to keep from raising these rates to where people can hardly afford them right now.
Put it out to your water department, Tim.
All this stuff goes back to when Doug Bishop was here. They knew that sewer and water were problems, and they kept kicking the cans.
I understand that. Part of that deal, come back to the department here now about giving permission on this water. But I know the vow ain't been turned off in Todd County yet, but it ain't very far off, I'm sure.
We're making payments to Logan Todd now.
So you're making payments now?
Yeah, we, I think we started buying water.
That's what I'm saying. You get put out to your water department and say, "Hey, anybody wants to hook up, maybe you better hook them up."
Well, and there's some areas that we can, and there are some areas that we can't. Just last year, we had a hydraulic study done in areas, and there was recommendations made. And there are capital improvement projects that have to be done. Unfortunately, some of those were not scheduled in this upcoming fiscal year due to reduced budgets. But, you know, we have every intention of improving our system so that we can make those taps and sell that water as soon as we can. I mean, it's, we all understand that it's needed.
You're getting on for it now. If you're already making payments on it.
We could, you know, if we can build a lot in the city of Springfield, you know, we can, we can sell some water. We've got, you know, we've got a 36-mile urban growth boundary, you know, unfortunately, by state law. The more I look into things, the more I'm just amazed. But, you know, state law pretty much says we can only annex properties that are contiguous to the city of Springfield. We can't do any corridor annexations or anything like that. So we can do annexations by referendum, where the majority of the people in the areas that we're wanting to do or annex, vote yes, we can annex that. But we agreed not to do referendum annexations in our urban growth boundary meetings and agreements with the county and the 10 other cities back in 2012. You know, in the next two years, we will be sitting down with those entities again and renegotiating growth boundaries and how we can move forward with annexations. But, you know, our boundary probably won't change, just the availability to how we can move forward with annexations, Mike.
Does state law require you to not offer sewer services outside the city limits?
No, state law does not require.
And I'd beat this dead horse enough, but y'all have strangled the growth of the growth boundary by not offering sewer outside the city limits. And I'll give you an example, right there on 49, the gentleman put that subdivision in out there. Y'all have actually just nailed him to a tree because he had to go with the county rigs. But then he has to meet the city requirements on sidewalks, streetlights, and spend all this extra money that he's not getting any services from the city at all. Where if the city would offer sewer to the growth boundary, then you would open the growth boundary right around Springfield up to numerous developments, nice developments. You'd have a sewer tap, you'd have a water tap. You've got two for one right there.
Yes, and we, I can very, I can pass that information along to Ms. Hope. And, you know, there are two sides to that discussion. Can I understand both sides?
Do you need to?
There are always two sides to every discussion.
Sure.
I understand that. But as we all live in the city, and just the water issue that Mr. Craig's talking about, that is the total reason I was for, I mean, we approved one that came tonight, no, that we didn't. The reason I was going to approve it was because it's going to bring more, it offers diversity. And that's what Mr. Francis was talking about, was diversity. There are a lot of people that want to spend $200,000 on a home and have something that they're paying their taxes toward more than what they've got, what their living is, what I'm saying. So I just felt it was another opportunity to increase revenues and improve the area. And I just want those that might have wondered why, that was the, that was my reasoning behind the way I voted on that. I just did not see it.
Behind the bank, by the railroad trust. When you ever come up with $3 million to fix it? I noticed what the bid was. Water that runs out by the bank, by the railroad trust. If y'all, if y'all don't hurry up and fix that quick, it's going to happen one night when it rains, and somebody's going to get hydroplanted out there and really in bad shape. It runs plum out in the other road over there.
Yes.
Because it's been going off over a year now.
Yes.
And we know what the problem is. It costs $3 million to fix, but by some point, the city got to come up with the money and say, "We got to fix this."
And, well, I think that the city, I think that we have, I will follow up with Ms. Hope, but I think that we have agreed to a, you know, we went out for bid. I think the contractor held his price. I think we're going to move forward with that. You know, we were trying to explore other funding options before we actually said that we would move forward with that. But you're absolutely correct, Mr. Johnson, we got to do something.
You can't fight CSX. I'm going to tell you, you might as well just give it up and say, "We're going to fix it and go on."
Yes, sir.
Because they're going to tear your tail up and held you forever.
I concur. You know, I'm firmly convinced.
CSX is tough.
I'm firmly convinced that CSX has more attorneys than they have train drivers.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Tonight's been a little lively.
Before you, in turn, I would just like...
Would you all be glad to be back together?
I would just like to say once again, it's a pleasure being able to get back together. I've missed y'all. I've missed the opportunity for us to get together as a group and discuss the city's business. This is by far much more, a better forum to move forward than the video format that we were using. Once again, I just want to reiterate to you guys that the city of Springfield appreciates your service on our Planning Commission, and we thank you so very much for taking your very valuable time and working and helping the city of Springfield move forward. Thank you. And y'all have a happy and uneventful 4th of July weekend.
Are we ready to adjourn?